Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, fire evacuation, in case of a fire, there's two ways to exit the chambers, to my left, your right, go through the exit, down the stairs, and away from the building are the rear of the chambers, and again, walk away from the building. Roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Terrence Lynch is absent. Linda DeGray?
Here.
John Petronella is here. Frank Alamo is absent. Joseph Muley?
Here.
Kenneth Thalinski?
Here.
Vinnie Grillo?
Here.
Christian Dantonio?
Here.
Walter Crusell?
Here.
And Rob Anderson?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to see Commissioner Crusell. I'm sorry, Walter. And Commissioner Anderson for the duration of the meeting, for the missing commissioners. I will accept a motion for the approval of minutes for May 22nd.
So moved, second.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
I will abstain.
Okay, one abstain. I will accept a motion for the approval of minutes for the May 21st special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions, concerns, corrections, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Town Attorney Report was May 23rd. Yes, I am going through this. Nothing from our
There's nothing tonight, Madam Chair.
... enforcement officer. At this time in the meeting, I'd like to open it up to public participation for anyone who'd like to speak, for about anything in the planning and zoning that is not on the agenda. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public participation. Bond release for PH 2926, 561 Hazard Ave.
This is a bond release for O'Reilly's Auto Parts. They have finished their site, everything looks good, the site is stabilized, landscaping is done, and now they just need their bond release.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Secretary.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the following motion, the Info Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $4,800. The site restoration bond in the amount of $36,000, and the landscape bond in the amount of $5,525.48 under public hearing number 2926, applicant O'Reilly Auto Parts, Inc. Second.
Okay, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Kenneth Thalinski?
Four.
Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Walter Crusell?
Four.
Rob Anderson?
Four.
And John Petronella's four.
Okay. Continued public hearing, PH 3124, 130 Town Farm Road, is the applicant here. Please have a seat. Make sure your mic is on, a little red light is on. Name and address, please, for the record.
My address?
Name and address, please.
My name's Bill Camerer, and my address is 250 Broadbrook Road, Enfield.
All right, all right, tell us why you're here.
We're here for the special permit so that we can have DJs, entertainment at the golf course.
Okay, and?
It involves changing to a cafe license.
Okay. Staff?
Welcome, everybody. So as the applicant stated, this is a special use permit for a modification of the existing liquor permit at Grassmere Country Club on 130 Town Farm Road. So the original approval was from a site plan back in 1977, approved in the 80s. In your, at your table today, you should have gotten a supplemental staff report from the zoning officer, and amended staff report from me, and a map from their original approval, which is the approved site plan from back then, and a piece of paper that I printed up, recommended site-specific conditions. So early on, the zoning officer and I were looking at the original approval to determine the second driveway, just to see that the site was still in compliance and how the site maintenance was going. During a site inspection, we noted a couple of missing things from the original approval, and of course, site maintenance is a requirement under Section 9.10.9 in the zoning regulations for any site that has an approved site plan from planning and zoning. First and foremost, the parking light, parking light, parking lot is missing striping, as well as the landscaped islands. Per the original approval, there were, one, two, three, four, five, there were four landscaped islands that had a couple of junipers on each island. Second thing that was missing was the front yard setback landscaping trees. And to the right of the site, looking at the site plan, the side yard maples are missing as well. Those large tree symbols are for maples, and the smaller stars are for junipers. And to the left of the site, on the site plan, the ones that are like thin symbols of stars, those are actually pines, but the left side landscaping is there. At Grassmere, on the right side of the site plan, there used to be, well, the construction entrance from the 80s was a gravel drive that the trucks used to access the back of the site. For somehow, that gravel entrance stayed, and it became part of the parking lot now. The original site plan showed the parking lot having two curb cuts, both paved, connecting to the parking lot. The curb cut on the left of the site was supposed to be a 25-foot width, but over time, is now a 78-foot width. Not sure what happened throughout time for the increment, but those were some of the things that we found would need to be fixed or modified by the commission. We have discussions between the applicant and yourselves. So the original approval, for the record, was PH number 1238, back from the 80s. The applicant is requesting a waiver of a site plan per Section 9.10.2.0C. However, because they are missing those requirements from the original approval, they would need an as-built survey to prove that everything has been either fixed or modified, depending on what the decision is tonight of that original plan and those changes. Fortunately, the applicant can use the old site plan if they plan on doing everything in accordance to the original approval. If they plan to modify some of those conditions, then they would need a new survey for an as-built as part of their post-approval process with the zoning officer for compliance. Some of the other conditions that I modified was, of course, if landscaping is involved, now we have a landscaping bond, and if we are modifying the curb cuts, it would most likely require an erosion and sediment control bond as well. So the site-specific sheet that you should have gotten tonight on your table has some recommendations for site specifics based off of what I just said. One of them would be, any outdoor events with entertainment of liquor must be submitted via zoning permit application for a zoning review by the CZEO, that is a standard condition for outdoor events. The additional site specifics would be, the parking lot would have to be restriped per the original approval, missing landscaping will be installed, which includes the six maples of a four-inch caliper and six junipers towards the front yard setback, and 17 junipers on four landscaped islands within the parking lot, and the seven missing maples on the left side of the property that abuts the brook. Of course, depending on what they do with that curb cut, might require some additional wetlands approval, whether or not that would be an agent approval or a permit, that would be up to the wetlands agent, Mr. Heine. And the PZC, you have the ability, because this is a special permit, to modify any of those original conditions, depending on what your discussion is tonight with the applicant. And then down below, I just noted what those missing plantings are, and the approved curb cuts with the current existing curb cut. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Did you understand what you were saying? That was my question.
Most of it.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right, we'll talk you through it, it's okay.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a question, because the, the plan that you gave us is kind of fuzzy and gray and dark. How many parking spaces were supposed to be there? Because it looks like quite a few. I'm trying to, and I'm sitting here trying to count them quickly. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I'm saying there's going to be 21 there. It looks like it's supposed, I don't know if that's... I'm trying to get an idea for parking. Because I've been in your parking lot, and it doesn't seem as large as what I'm showing here on the...
What I see, that can't be done the way this...
Yeah, that's why I'm asking these...
Madam Chair, there are 102 parking spaces.
102?
Yeah, but I cannot tell if there's any ADA compliance spaces.
Yeah, okay, no, I'm just saying is, having been at multiple events at the golf course, I, 102, I don't, I don't know if this is the way it's, this is accurate as the way it's built now.
So, so the building is accurate, the parking lot's shape is accurate, but just somewhere along the middle of that parking lot, it kind of went a little bit wider than what was approved. And I'm not sure if that was a construction confusion at that time, when they just thought, oh, that's the construction entrance, that must be our parking lot exit. I'm not entirely sure what happened. All I know is that it's gravel with a paved apron.
Right, and, yeah, because I've been there, and I've seen that it's a paved apron, but a gravel drive.
Right, it is a little bit, it's not in the correct location as to where the original curb cut should have been. That should be one of the things to discuss tonight with the applicant, to see what they would feel, and whether that means getting rid of that gravel driveway, and relocating it to the correct spot, making the correct width, or if the commission would want to modify their parking lot to just instead cancel out that paved curb cut, and just include the gravel drive as is.
Okay.
With the now expanded 78-foot existing curb cut on the opposite side of the parking lot.
Okay. Laurie, did you have something?
The...
Okay, all right. Walter, do you have any questions?
Okay, so this drawing was drawn in 75. And obviously, it wasn't, it was never completed in 75. That's what, what it looks like. Because last event I was, I mean, the first event I was there was 1884, and it was the same parking lot that there is now, so.
True, we bought it in 83, it's been like that ever since, 1980.
That's what I'm saying, so.
It's never changed. Other than...
So he bought it in 80, you bought it in 83.
1983, yeah, and it was like that.
Obviously, the previous owner is the one that didn't do the, what was, what was approved. So, there's just a comment, I don't know if any... I don't know what to do.
Okay. Vinnie, any?
Not at this time, no, thank you.
Joe?
My thing's the same thing, I mean, it doesn't sound like there was a very good, I'm sorry. It doesn't seem like there was a very good follow-up in 75 for what was supposed to be there, and he's inherited somebody else's mess at the moment. As far as that gravel drive goes, it's probably a good idea to keep it, whether you have to pave it or not, but maybe make that exit only, signage-wise. Just because I know that, that big, the big driveway, and people coming east on Town Farm, it's hard to see till you get up over that little rise.
Right.
So maybe entry only there, and exit at the other one. Probably make your traffic flow better, just a suggestion.
Okay.
Other than that, that's it.
Rob?
No, I don't really have anything, I'm just, I'm just still trying to figure out what happened, what, how they got where they're at from where the plan is. Because it's so different.
Christian? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just don't really have, I don't really have anything, because I don't really understand how it got where it is.
Christian?
Yeah, I mean, it's obvious, you know, the original plan wasn't adhered to, but we're talking like 50 years ago now, so. And they're coming here for something that's more or less administrative, kind of a technicality, that they have to come to us because of the liquor permit changing.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, so that's the challenge, is that, I mean, if they were actually changing the property, that might be a different story, if they were significantly altering, you know, if it was a new use, it's not even a new use. So I don't think, so, yeah, I kind of struggle if, to, to, to require these things from 1975 that clearly, you know, as previously mentioned, just weren't followed through. And maybe, you know, that was probably the town's fault for not following through that, you know, releasing the bonds, or maybe they didn't have bonds, or whatever it was at the time. It's a conundrum to be here.
John?
Yeah, well, one of the recommended site-specific conditions is, of course, parking lot will be restriped per original approval. Obviously, that can't be accomplished based upon this 1975 drawing. It is, the whole pavement layout, everything is really different, and I'm not sure that there's enough of pavement and parking areas where you can meet the number of parking requirements, so. So I don't know how many you're going to be able to end up with. I think we need to know that, or have to have a plan. And if they're looking for, if it's going to be less, you know, it's going to, we're going to have to have action on it, or, you know, be able to vote on that specifically. Because we, if we vote on this as it stands, they're not going to be able to meet that requirement. So where does it go from that point, so?
I can answer some of your questions. So, this isn't un-normal to happen with sites here in Enfield. A lot of the properties in Enfield are very historic, in terms that they were approved between the 60s and 80s at some point. I can't speak to whether or not the bonds are released or anything, I'd have to dig deeper into the file. I'm not sure if there was documentation of that time about the bonds. But the parking lot striping, you definitely should probably consider that. That's a typical condition that we require for a lot of sites with special use permits. The, the term, the fact about the site not being recognized sooner and the, for the town, in terms of the not following up with their approval. Our department is complaint-driven when it comes to complaints and whatnot, and violations. So if we don't get a complaint about a site missing landscaping or a violation, then we're not going to go out and look for them. The other possibility could have been a changeover in staff. When staff changes over, approvals fall through the cracks, and then you kind of forget about them. Time goes on, they go on the shelf, and then things don't get brought back up until the future owner comes back in for a modification or a special use permit. But fortunately, under the special use permit powers, you can modify those original conditions to try and help the applicant, if you would like to. But I definitely would like to put the importance on the front yard landscaping and the parking lot striping at least.
Okay. You all set, John?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah, I like the idea of getting the parking lot restriped. I think that, that would be a good idea. Per the original approval, I agree with John, I don't think you can really do that. So I would suggest maybe we could change that to, the parking lot will be restripped working with the staff to find an appropriate solution for that. I mean, whether it's less spaces, whatever. Yes, go ahead.
So, the only thing I could, I could think of is that if we actually dig into this and find out, okay, we have this plan that was approved, and then this company or whatever purchased the property, and we could go back and figure out whether or not the approved plan was adhered to when they purchased it, just by, by looking at old aerial photographs, we could probably do that. But that, that's the only way. If they changed it after they bought it, then they would be in violation of the site plan that was approved. If they bought it like this, then they're not. So, the one thing I would say is, I think that the 75-foot opening is very dangerous, because cars don't know where to go. That's why you have like a 25 or a 50-foot opening, and usually it's 30 feet, just like 15 feet each way. And that way, cars are not just coming in randomly, because, you know, from whatever, whatever direction. But I just think that that's an issue of safety more than anything, but I think the applicant should consider...
That was the other thing I was going to mention, along with the striping, which I think we, we should come up with some kind of plan to do that. I think we should also complete the paving for the parking lot cuts.
If, if they didn't change it after they purchased it, then it would be hard for us to enforce it.
The other thing is, it seems like when they were building the site, they kind of stopped the front yard setback landscaping short. If they, an easy solution would be to minimize that 78-foot curb cut on the right side to replace it with that missing front yard setback landscaping. That would reduce the, the danger criteria with public safety for coming into the parking lot.
I will tell you that I don't think it's changed since...
And I don't know, I wouldn't know, so.
I went there a lot during the 70s, and if I go there now, I don't really golf there that much, but if I go there now for a function or something, it doesn't look to me like the parking lot has changed a bit.
So this is also one of the risks with construction entrances, like with Trinity Health, where they had the special condition for the middle road construction entrance, and then we were very adamant that that needs to be closed, gated, once you're done. So this is just an example of why we have that now. I mean, it's pretty typical for these older sites out there, and if you don't know, then you're not going to complain about it. So it's just a consequence of an old site, and then just staff turnover, probably. But I definitely think the commission should just reconsider the public health, safety, and welfare aspects here on the road, and then discuss possible solutions with the applicant.
Okay. Go ahead.
To staff, just trying to help them out also with all the bonds. Obviously, definitely missing a whole row of the parking in the front where there's grass, but if they were to, on the driveway cut that's there now, it's 50 feet?
78.
78.
So, just like we do in a lot of other places, would he, would we be able to allow him to put in that, to solve that problem, a little island just at the end of the driveway? So that will determine in and out, which will give you over 30 feet on both sides?
Would you want to put the in and out on that one entrance, though? Or did you want to make the one-way exit?
Well, you were just mentioning how we had made them over there, close off that entrance. So if that was going to be an idea, that they're not using that entrance, and it's probably, in my, in my eyes, that'd be more use parking than make...
Overflow parking?
Than, than an exit, you know, if anything, to go. So if you did a little bit of planting, that makes everybody happy. You, you did your lines, what you have there, there's, to me, it looks like about 60 to 65 parking spots.
Yeah.
And an island at the end of the driveway, nothing big, just a curb. Mr. Petronella, help me out, please.
We're going out, coming in on one side.
Like a curb, an island that partially closed that entrance, so that it's an in-and-out driveway, so that you could physically see that there's a certain direction to come in, and a certain way to get out.
That's... He's the pro at that, that's what I was trying to say, put that, and that's not a big... But I'd like to see if we can do all of that with all.
There is one thing I do want to point out, because of this, the applicant hasn't been able to utilize their parking lot to the full extent of their original approval. The way it's laid out now is about half of what was approved for parking, they got about 50 spaces. If they increase the landscaping in the front, that will provide some additional parking spaces for patrons. But if they increase the paving on the right side, and get rid of that gravel drive and pave it, then they'd make more parking spots per the original approval on the right side as well. Just, just a suggestion, an idea.
Almost, I was...
So you could pull in up top where it is now to pave, and make an exit down below?
Did you, did you want the one-way circulation? Or did you want to add like an island in the middle for exit and entrance? We could, if you want the traffic authority to weigh in more, there's time in the statute timeline for making a decision, and I could always run it by Sergeant Meyer, but at the applicant's discretion, of course.
I think a traffic professional such as Sergeant Myers would be the best way to go, because he, he has more information about the safety of the road. So that would be a concern, and the number of parking spaces that you're really missing would be, you know, if you closed up that, you could add maybe, I don't know, four or five more spaces.
Right, right.
So...
But put in that island also will eliminate the problem of that 75-foot
Right.
opening now, he'll make it so that it's legal on both sides. In, out, that would take care of a lot of concerns, I would think. Now you're underneath that 30-foot curb cut.
Right.
With just a little island, wouldn't cause much.
John?
Yeah, I got a question to the staff through the chair, but if, if, if he can come up with a restriping plan that shows 70 spaces, and the original requirement was 102 or whatever, now, and if that was the requirement that he needs based upon the use and so forth, would he need, he would need us to, you know, vote, to vote on a variance to lessen it, or?
No, you have a provision where...
You have a provision where you can waive or modify the parking requirements, and I, I am going to assume that the regulations back then in the 80s were probably super different than what our parking requirements are now. One of the ideas to reduce impervious is always to add more islands, but if you add islands, you take away space for a potential parking spot. But fortunately, special permit, you can amend those conditions. You can reduce the parking requirements from the original of 102 down to a number that suits of what the business capacity is per the applicant. But yeah.
But you're not aware of any changes that were made after this was built? This is the original plan that they got approved, but there was no changes that were made?
No, I believe the first time...
The as-built, or anything like that?
No, the first time was when they came in for the original development, and then from what we found, it was the first liquor permit, and now this modification of the liquor permit. I don't recall seeing anything between them, but I can definitely look again.
Yeah, this is, this is quite a bit different. The original has the pavement almost right up to the building, and as it was built, and I believe whoever said it, but I believe that this is the way it was built originally, that, you know, because we have that extensive lawn area in front of the building. That's all I've ever known it to be.
That's all I've ever seen.
Something the, if the applicant is okay with, and the commission is okay with this, maybe a solution would be for the applicant to make a concept plan right now with the way it's laid out currently, in terms of striping and possible landscaping. And then that could come back before you, to help you discuss solutions with this issue.
Okay. Walter?
So counting, using the picture that we got of the existing, I get about 60 parking spaces, so. And, you know, obviously, a couple handicaps where there's no handicap on this. And to me, to, I'd rather have the grass, like, I'd rather have it like it is, not bring the pavement up to the building like it was originally. You know, obviously, it wasn't, you know, and like I said, I could witness from 1984 on that this is, this is what it was, and in 1984, when, the first time I was ever there, my senior banquet, so.
Are you dating yourself, Walter?
Of course. And I've got gray hair, so what else am I supposed to do?
Okay.
But, yeah, but then he can also extend, if needed, he can extend the... But then he can also extend, if needed, he can extend the parking. But I think 60 spaces is more than enough what he needs for his business, so.
But my concern is to change this to be an, also to have a wedding and golfers at the same time. So, and, you know, it's not unusual to have a golf course, to have a venue.
Yeah, I understand.
And they have a nice venue there.
Yes.
And it should be utilized. So, to have, say, a wedding and then have all your golfers out there, your parking lot is not going to be sufficient. And when I went over there one evening, the parking lot was full and they were parked in the grass.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
And so, I have concerns. And I want you to succeed. You've been here a long time. We want you to succeed. We go there. This is a town place to go.
Thanks.
So.
Yeah, when we have, they park on the grass when need be.
Right, but that's not approved.
Madam Chair?
Not approved.
Yes.
I just want to point out, because they're asking for an update in their liquor permit, the applicant's narrative mentions the weddings, the private parties, potential bands, DJs, fundraisers, with hours of operation, Saturday, Sunday, maybe 11 to 4:00 or 6:00 to 11:00, the maximum of 150 people and a minimum of 50 people.
Right, and that's a lot of cars. That's an additional, anywhere, if 100 people show up, a minimum of 75 cars, plus your golfers, day like today. I mean, you're parking, where are they going to park? And that is a concern. Safety. Because I drove through your parking lot and this lady almost hit me twice. It was the same lady.
That might be any parking lot.
Because it was, she was like flying through there. But I think we need a little bit more information. And I think, I think you need a little bit more information from staff and from our safety officer-
Yeah.
Before we can make a really good determination.
Okay.
We have the time.
Okay.
So, it's not like we have to close this and we make a decision today. I know you'd like a decision today. But I think to make it good for you and good for the town, we can just spend a little bit more time on this. Anybody else? Any, do you agree that we should just table this and allow the staff to work with this gentleman? And we can all come to a better solution?
Can I meet with the traffic person when he comes out?
Um, I don't know how that works. I can't tell you when he'll be there.
Staff would know.
The traffic person is Matt Meyer. He's a police officer.
Oh, he is? Okay.
Yeah. So, he's our traffic reviewer, kind of, for the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's a good guy.
If you wanted to, and if he had questions, he would call you. So, I mean, when we contact him, we'll certainly give him your number so he can discuss it with you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's just one more thing. I'm not sure if I mentioned this already, and I apologize if I did, was sometimes throughout the year, there's like the occasional sand pile out in the parking lot as well.
Yes, I saw that today.
That would be part of one of the site specifics, to just put that in the correct location, to remove it from the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's top-
There's sand traps.
Greens, really expensive stuff. We were supposed to put it on this week, but we didn't get a chance. I'll get rid of it tomorrow.
Just make the sand traps bigger, that's all.
It's very beautiful sand.
Just get in there and kick it out. Yes. Okay, I will, you're comfortable with this, you know?
Yeah.
And you can meet with the staff.
Yep.
Hopefully, we can get some more answers for our next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Okay.
And so, we want to work with you on this. We really do.
Thank you.
We're not trying to derail you, we're trying to help you.
I understand.
All right.
Work with you.
All right, I'll accept the motion to table. Yep, go ahead.
I'll make a motion, table.
Go ahead.
I will. One of you is make the motion.
I did, you can second.
Second.
All right. Okay.
Joe made the motion, I seconded it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 10-seconded. Okay. All right. Public hearing 3125ZA, text amendment.
Yep.
Secretary.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, June 12, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3125ZA, text amendment application to add a footnote under table 8.10.3 in section 8.10.3 for liquor class separation distance requirements, 12 Alden Avenue LLC applicant.
Name and address, please.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Carl Landelina, representing the applicant, 12 Alden Avenue LLC. I was here a few months ago, asking for you to delete a footnote. Now, I'm asking you to change another one. Had it been more on the ball back in March, we would have done these two together, but here we are. So, when we went, when we started to prepare our application for a special permit for this property to get a Class IV liquor license, it was very obvious, not to me, because I hadn't been to the site, but there's a church right across the street. And that violates your separation regulations in 8.10.3. So, you, right now, your regulations allow you to waive entirely or modify those requirements for Class 1 and Class 5 licenses. So, I'm asking you now to modify the footnote so that it would include Class 4 licenses, especially in the TD districts, which are densely populated and, you know, there's a lot of churches in that area and a lot of businesses. And obviously, it was built at a time when people walked and you walked from your house to church. On the way home for Sunday dinner, you might have stopped along the way to chat with a few friends at a local establishment of some kind. So, anyway, it's nothing more than that, and I won't take up any more of your time. This establishment that we're trying to get a Class IV license for, like I said, is probably, wouldn't meet the 1,000 feet for a number of reasons, certainly the church across the street. But there's probably other religious houses or other, you have a term for it, the special, whatever you call them. But there's probably three or four within the distance of 1,000 feet, so.
Any question?
I don't have anything right now.
Thank you. Question?
Pretty straightforward.
John?
No real question. I just, for clarification, we're going to, the action is to, the proposal is to add footnote one to the Class IV liquor license classification, I think. That's-
Separate section, yeah. That would be it, add that little footnote in that table at 8.10.3 separation distances.
Yeah.
The footnote exists for Class 1 and 5, and we're asking you to put it in for Class 4.
To add 4 to it.
You had 4 now, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's all I have, yeah.
Okay.
I'm good.
Joe?
Yeah.
Denny? Walter?
So, we're already doing 4. What's the difference between 2 and 3?
Are you asking me or you're asking the commission?
I'm asking somebody, so.
Yeah.
So, is 4 this big a shot? And 5, 2 and 3 are this big a shot? Or what's the?
No, so Class 1 is a hotel permit, hotel permit for the sale of beer only, restaurant permit, restaurant permit for the sale of wine and beer, or restaurant permit for the sale of beer only. Class 2 is tavern permits and cafes. Class 3 is package stores and drugist permits. Class 4 is package stores for the sale of beer only, grocery stores for the sale of beer only, and drugist permits for the sale of beer only. And Class 5 is club permits.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
I thought it was size, but I guess it wasn't.
Okay, so you know I'm going to rain on your parade. You know I'm going to do that.
I don't have a parade.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Assuming you want to hear from staff, right?
Yes, yes. Go ahead, go for it.
Carl summed it up better than I could have, I believe. Per statute, the text amendment was placed in the town clerk's office at least 10 days prior to the meeting. This was not required to go to CROG because the parcels that this text amendment affects are not within 500 feet of another municipality. If you make a motion to approve tonight, just remember to state your findings per the POCD and the effective date of June 30, 2025, per publication and the newspaper on June 14, 2025.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now. Everywhere else in town, we say 1,000 feet. And because this person bought this building and decided to open a store, I just feel that we're starting to set a precedent. And if it were, and I'm not against, I'm not against this applicant at all, that, this is not a necessity. It's not like bread, milk, cheese, meat thing. And to start changing and allowing this to happen in one place, we have to allow it everywhere. And that starts to set precedent. And I understand, because I've lived in the town all my life, the number of bars that were on Pleasant Street and in the area and down Main Street, and the churches, a lot of churches have changed and a lot of the things have changed. But I start to feel like we're changing precedent and then it opens Pandora's box. And that's just my personal. Anybody else would like to? Walter?
Well, churches weren't in storefront stores years ago like they are now. I mean, literally, you go down Route 5, there's a church in a storefront store. You go down North Main Street, there's a church. I mean, the church was a building with a steeple and now it's-
Don't forget the church in the mall.
Yeah, and the church in the mall, so it's, you know-
But the Greek Orthodox Church has been on-
I don't know. I'm just saying that, you're talking about the church across on Church Street that's in that little, that's in another building, like across the street from Church Street, right? That's the church you're saying that's across the street?
I'm not sure which one it is. But to your comment, I mean, I agree. So, that 50 years ago, 100 years ago, you had, I don't know, four major religions and you had churches. Now, you've got 100 different practices and-
You've got a guy that goes on a website, signs it, sways it with his head, and he's a reverend now, so he can make a church, so.
So, but the other thing is that, and I understand your concerns, and I have a suggestion, which I'll make in a few seconds. But this, maybe if you want to limit this to the TD zones, because we are talking about a densely already-developed area, maybe this, and this is, would be, a waiver would have to be voted by this commission by a three-quarters vote. And the person who's asking for it would have to establish that it's appropriate. And in some areas, it might be appropriate, where maybe in some of the more, let's say, single-family residential areas, it might not be appropriate to give a waiver for this kind of thing. So, or if you want to limit this to the, you know, that, because right now, you would allow a hotel to ask for a waiver, no matter where it exists. And the same with a club.
Excuse me, one second. Is this in the TD 3?
The 5, I believe.
It's in the 5?
5, right.
Okay.
So, this is right on Alden, right?
It's on the corner of Alden and-
It's the old Progi Queen site.
Yeah, I know what it is, but I want to make sure that I, because the zoning, the different divisions of Thompsonville. And it's a TD 4? Or I thought-
We are at a TD 5.
It's 5.
And that is commercial?
Yes, the TD 1, 2, and 3, I could see that.
Yeah, this whole TD 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is confusing. Without seeing the map. Yeah, we went through the zones last night.
Just another comment. When we did the marijuana regulations and then we modified them and we defined place of worship as meaning a building or place that by design is intended for conducting organized religious services. So, it had to be the building, you know, as Walter said, you know, the box and the steeple and all the people.
Okay, all right. All right.
Yeah, that one.
Anyone else?
And we also did the same thing for schools. Because like-
Right.
Child daycare could pop up next door in a heartbeat.
All right.
The other thing, this would be for not onsite consumption, obviously. This is just, you walk in and you get a six-pack of beer and-
It's part of the grocery store.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
And I'm guessing that almost every grocery store in this town sells wine and beer. I'd be surprised if they didn't.
Beer. They don't, they're not allowed to sell one.
Yeah.
Just beer.
Beer.
Anybody else?
California, they can sell anything.
Question?
I'll just add the comment that they would still have to come back for a special permit for us to, so we're not granting them the waiver here. We're not saying, hey, we're guaranteeing that they still have to come back to us. And then any future applicant looking to waive this 1,000-foot requirement would have to come to us. So, I mean, I do think it's, I think it's within reason. And, you know, speaking of precedent, we do have a precedent to allow the reduced waiver for a couple other liquor permits. So, I mean, this feels pretty reasonable to me. And I don't think it's necessarily opening the floodgates. I think if somebody comes in and, you know, tries to open a package store selling beer only, if that's even a thing, I don't know if that's particularly lucrative. But, you know, let's say next door to a school and they try to come to us, we could say, no, that's clearly, you know, not good for the safety of children. And we could deny that, so.
Okay.
I'd be supportive of that.
All right, just bringing up thoughts. Anybody else? No? Okay. Anything from staff?
Just confirming that it is TD 5.
Okay. Anyone in the public like to speak for or against this applicant? Anyone? Okay, all right. I will entertain a motion to close-
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, please. This is just to close.
Yes, Linda DeGray?
4.
Kenneth Alinsky?
4.
Vinnie Grillo?
4.
Joseph Muley?
4.
Walter Crizell?
4.
Rob Anderson?
4.
And John Petronella is 4.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Secretary?
Entertain a motion?
Give me a second. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3125ZA, text amendment application to add a footnote under table 8.10.3 in section 8.10.3 for liquor class separation distance requirements, 12 Alden Avenue LLC owner. With the findings, in adopting this regulation, the commission has considered the plan of conservation and development and finds that the amendment to be consistent with the POCD, page 58 and chapter 10 of Thompsonville, and the effective date published in the newspaper, June 14, 2025. And the amendment shall be effective on June 30, 2025.
Second.
Commissioner Petronella, before you make a motion, I would just include that it was specific to TD 4 and TD 5 zones.
And would that be in the findings?
Just as amended.
As amended?
Yes, for your motion.
Would be in TD 4 and 5 zones?
Yes, per the applicant's request.
All right. Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Roll call.
So are we voting on the amendment and the main motion? Or both together?
It's together.
The amended motion with the findings and the effective date of June 30th.
So the whole thing?
Yeah, the whole thing. Okay.
Linda DeGray?
4.
Kenneth Alinsky?
4.
Vincent Grillo?
4.
Joseph Muley?
4.
Walter Crizell?
4.
Rob Anderson?
4.
And John Petronella is 4.
Okay. You're all set? Good night. Okay. When you're ready, Mr. Secretary, PH 3126, 3 Waymouth Road.
Excuse me. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their regular meeting on Thursday, June 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3126, 3 Waymouth Road, application for a special use permit for daycare facility within the existing fitness center, Enfield Club Properties LLC, applicant owner, MAP 17, Lot 86, BG and KSESDOD zones.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi. Name and address, please, for the record.
Madam Commissioner and Commissioner, thanks for having us in tonight. My name is Steve Capazone. I am the owner of Health Tracks Fitness and Wellness. My home address, 73 Mahoney Road, Colchester, Connecticut. And with me is Jenny Rinaldi, owner of World of Imaginations. I don't know your address.
Home address, 15 Noah Chapin Drive, Summers, Connecticut.
Okay. Tell us why you're here. You're on TV.
Well, we're here, Madam Commissioner, because we think there's a great opportunity for both the fitness club...
Could you speak into the mic?
Sorry.
It's okay.
We think there's a great opportunity for the fitness club by diversifying and adding some new programming. Also, a great opportunity for families in the community for their kids. And we do offer some really unique offerings at the facility that I think most daycares don't have, a lot of programming opportunities to really differentiate ourselves and make it a, a really successful business. I will add that, you know, since COVID, fitness and, the fitness industry got creamed. And it's been our job over the last five years to try to diversify the business and create stability. And this is a great opportunity that is very successful across the country in many family-orientated fitness clubs, as well as I'm sure you've seen it in YMCA's, JCC's, boys' and girls' clubs. It's a great fit, great synergy, and we're hoping that you will approve us. By the way, it's about 3,500 square feet within our 50,000 square foot box, so, you know, it's not a huge, huge outlay, but we think it'll really help our business.
Do you want to add anything to, to this? Okay. Staff?
Good evening again. So this is an application requesting a new special use permit for daycare from the existing health club known as Health Tracks at 3 Waymouth Road. So this type of approval was before the commission prior in 2007 for a daycare for capacity of 3,100 square feet to accommodate 52 children. The approval expired as it was never followed through. Another daycare special use permit approval was granted in 2009 with a capacity of 3,700 square feet to accommodate 76 children. This approval was also not followed through and expired. SPR in 1942 was approved in 2024 for the installation of a .775 megawatt Best battery system on the west side of the existing building opposite of the proposed place gate location. A building permit has yet to be applied for. Note that the survey was drawn to show existing conditions for the proposal of the daycare only, since the battery isn't there, didn't make the site plan. There were no concerns. We've had multiple ARTs with the applicant working on their project. Their proposal satisfies all the required zoning regulations from a planning perspective. The building department didn't have any specific concerns and that they can address any building issues between their building permit process. The health department did not have any concerns. They just needed a comprehensive lead inspection, which was done and submitted by the applicant, so that will move forward with NCHG. You would have to make a motion to approve a waiver of a C buffer per section 10.20.C for finding of the established vegetated area being sufficient or not, and then a motion to approve the application as a whole. I did not have any recommended site-specific conditions. I said that. And then the parking lot per the Health Tracks original approval remains unchanged with a total of 165 spaces, 6 being ADA compliant. The health club requirement was 125 at that time. With the expansion of uses to incorporate the daycare, 22 spaces are required and 22 spaces have been allocated from the existing parking lot, so it will be shared parking. These 12 spaces for the daycare employees will be located on the west side of the parking lot. 10 remaining spaces are to be for pickup and drop-off of children, where parents will have to park, bring in, and pick up their children from the daycare, so there is no drop-off at the door option. Health Tracks believes that the allocation of the 22 spaces for the daycare, current parking lot spaces of existing and new visitors, will not be negatively impacted for the existing health club fitness center visitors. Other than that, that was all I had. Thank you.
I just have one question because I, the gym that I go to has a daycare in it. So would it be for both the members of Health Tracks and working parents? Or is, could you explain that?
So the plan is for it to not be a drop-in center. No, it would be a licensed center that would have enrolled children full-time, not a drop-in center for just people exercising.
That's the part I couldn't figure out. If it was just, you know, it was for both a drop-in and an enrolled child. Okay. Rob, any questions?
So there's, there's no daycares currently at Health Tracks?
There's no licensed daycare. We, in the pre-COVID, had a drop-off childcare service, two hours maximum. Parents had to be in the building. That ended during COVID and has not restarted.
And... What are your plans for security as far as keeping everything separate from the regular gym memberships?
So each area that is allocated for the childcare has, will have a key code entry, so no doors would be open to the childcare area.
Would the kids in the daycare have access to parts of the gym during the day?
No.
Any, any parts of the day, like...
As far as like, like the basketball court, is that what you...
Right, right.
Yeah. I mean, yes, I think that's our hope is to be able to, you know, utilize all of the space that's in the building and so after school, being able to have access, but there would have to be, you know, time restrictions on things and staffing would have to remain compliant with all licensing regulations.
Okay. And there wouldn't be any intermingling of the kids and...
No. No staff would be intermingled and no kids would be intermingled with like outside people.
Commissioner Anderson? It's kind of similar to the way the YMCA operates, where they have specific designated time slots where the children can use certain locations in the building, so there is no interaction between gym-goers and the children.
Okay, good to know. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Question?
No questions.
John?
Just a clarification on the plan. If I'm looking at sheet A 3.0, the overall building plan, floor plan, shows the shaded area and then the enlargement, the enlarged plan to the right. The floor plan shows it is, it's described as the first floor plan, so when you look at the enlarged plan of the shaded area, it says second floor plan. So is, is that a typo or is, is the daycare on the first floor or the second floor?
It's on the first. Yeah. It's on the first floor.
Okay, so that is a typo. I, I guess on sheet A 3.0, enlarged, should be enlarged first floor plan. Okay, I was just trying to understand that. I was a little bit confused. And, and on sheet A 2.0, I'm not even sure what that is. I, well, I know what it is, but what's the relevance of the first floor plan showing that shaded area? And then the enlarged plan?
Commissioner Petronella? So the shaded area is where the actual daycare, like classrooms, will be. That's the proposed, like, children rooms. The part that is blown up with the dash lines on sheet A 2.0 is just an enlarged floor plan showing the scope of work with the occupants and the square footage. Sheet A 3.0 shows the similar layout, but with the other location for the children, the childcare, and then the little dash diagram just shows that enlarged.
So the daycare is...
They are on the same floor.
But, but it's in two different locations in the building?
Yep. They'll have, they'll have a series of classrooms on one corner of the floor and then a series on the opposite corner.
Got it. It's just that the enlarged plan, it didn't define it as...
I believe that is a typo.
It didn't define it as, like on sheet A point, or A 3.0, as childcare areas and so forth. It was just, all it has was occupancy laws.
Right. If you look at A 3.0, it does specify childcare in the blown-up image. It's just a little bit hard to see with the first one.
Right, right. Okay, I'm good. I just wanted to...
Yep, no problem.
Understanding. Yep, thank you.
Ken?
I'm good.
Joe? Danny? Walter?
So are they both sheets are typos? That both areas are on the first floor?
Both areas are on the first floor.
Okay. And they're existing rooms that are just be reconstructed?
Correct. One is a physical therapy space that Johnson Memorial occupied for years, and the other is a group exercise space that will be converted for the older children.
Got you. So they'll have no access to the, is, there is no, there is a second floor there, so they won't have access to the second floor? It's all on the first floor?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody? All right. Staff?
I was gonna say, we did do a site inspection and they were in the process of just working on cleaning out the rooms and it, I do believe it will look fairly nice once it's done and finished with remodeling.
Okay. Anybody, anything? Anything to add? No? Okay. I will entertain a motion to close public hearing 3126.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please. Close the hearing.
Linda DeGray?
4.
Kenneth Alinsky? 4.
Vincent Grillo?
4.
Walter Crizell?
4.
Rob Anderson?
4.
And John Petronella is 4.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion when you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
Yeah, there's a waiver first that we're gonna vote on. I'd like to make a motion to approve a waiver of C, of the C buffer per section 8.20.C.
10.20.C.
10.20.
10.20. What did I say?
8.
Oh, I'm sorry. 10.20.C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda DeGray?
4.
Kenneth Alinsky?
4.
Vincent Grillo?
4.
Joseph Muley?
4.
Walter Crizell?
4.
Rob Anderson?
4.
And John Petronella is 4. And I'd like to make a motion to approve PH 3126, 3 Waymouth Road, application for a special use permit for daycare facility within the existing fitness center, Enfield Club Properties LLC, applicant owner, MAP 17, Lot 86, BG and KSESDOD zones.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Linda DeGray?
4.
Kenneth Alinsky?
4.
Vinnie Grillo?
4.
Joseph Muley?
4.
Walter Crizell?
4.
Rob Anderson?
4.
And John Petronella is 4.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it.
Any young kids, bring them down. Or grandchildren.
Grandkids.
Okay. All right. We have no old business, new business, nothing at the moment. Commissioners, correspondence, anybody? Nothing?
Commissioner DeGray?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, we did meet this week with the Ag Commission. I met with them and just heads up, they're still going through the agricultural section of the regulations, so they'll, they're not, they're, for what it's worth, they're, they're not like, it, it, there, there's not really much changing so far. They have a few small tweaks that they came up with that they'll, they'll send through. But, yeah, I, I'm not expecting any, anything major from them.
Okay.
So just heads up.
Great, thanks.
I also did want to, I'm just, just pulling up my notes if you don't mind for a second.
Sure.
I did, we also had a Regional Planning Commission meeting last week. They had a special presentation and I can, I can send the link out. They did publish it, the recording about parking, you know, everybody's favorite subject. What to know about parking, understanding parking, parking regulations that meet the needs of the community and developers. So, again, I'll send you guys, but it, it is pretty interesting, so, you know, they, they talk about maintaining the balance between, you know, encouraging, you know, development and being, being wary of requiring too much parking and how much parking costs. I think I've shared this, this fact before, but they put it in, in their presentation, just something to think about, the cost that comes to developers. Surface spaces cost, on average, $5,000 each. Structured parking costs $40,000 per space, so that's a parking garage. Again, that's per space. And if you go underground parking, you're, you're looking at $80,000 per space. It's crazy. It's, and actually, this, this was something new. They gave a rule of, a rule of thumb as far, and, and maybe Commissioner Petronella could speak to this from experience, but the rule of thumb, they said, was for each $1,000 in construction cost translates to $100 in rent. So I was like, oh, that's, that's an interesting way to put it. But the thought there is, is when requiring parking or, you know, a lot of parking, that can dissuade developers. They'll, they'll want to provide parking for their patrons or their residents, but sometimes an extra 10, 20 parking spaces can, can, can do, put a project under and make it not viable, so there's a balance there. And then, we'll, we'll, I know we have it, we had it on our agenda yesterday, we didn't get to, but they talked a lot about HB 5002, but we all got a printout of, of the summary.
Right. And it hasn't been signed yet.
And it's not been signed yet. But, yeah, so that's, that's what we covered at the last meeting.
Okay, great. Anybody else? No? Okay. Director of Planning report.
Hello.
Hello.
I have something to discuss with you about a change of house style for a development. At the southeast corner of Reynard and George Washington, it's a multifamily housing development. You saw it recently for phasing. So the new, and that developer would like to change the architecture style. There's really not much change, but I put that before you this evening.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I should probably recuse myself from this conversation.
Yes, that, that's probably a good idea.
Okay.
As he's part of the developer crew.
Yeah, it was, she passed, oh, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to share with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I...
I'm sorry.
I dropped my pen and I forgot.
Just pushed your side.
But, so, so first you have the layout plan of the development. And some of you might have a... have a double-sided one, because some of these just got tinted with two-sided.
He just wants to change the?
So, that just shows you where all the houses will be located. So, all the little boxes are where a house will be.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then, you have a little packet like this. These are the houses that were, if you want, if you go back to the original of this, this was actually for senior housing. And then they came back and they got the multifamily housing development text amendment, and then they came in with the multifamily housing development. So, it used to be called Reynard Gardens, and it's now Stonebridge Gardens.
Commons.
Commons, yes. I said gardens, but I'm reading comments. 42 units, and basically, these were the original units, kind of cottage-looking. And they were about 2,000 to almost 3,000 square feet, I believe. And then, the new ones that are proposed, a little bit more modernized, but still kind of country-looking, on the big sheet. And actually, if somebody else wants to see the big sheet. Yeah. So, all we, so he wants to change, so when you approve one of these developments, you, we ask for the architecture, and you approve that architecture. So, because it's a new developer, a new type of development for a different population, he would like to update the architecture and the style of the housing. So, I was, I'm just bringing it to you, if you want him to come in formally for this, or if you just say it's okay and this is good?
Because this has changed, the architect, doesn't he have to come? I'm just asking. I mean, to me, the architect looks just as nice as the first ones, but wouldn't he have to come back in to do that change?
I'm sorry, that was the big question. We've been vacillating back and forth about it from staff, because it's like, it is architecture, but, I mean, and you do kind of approve it, but he just purchased it and wants to build something.
He just asked, Lori asked me about this last night, and I said, let's just take a look at it. If it was something horrible that was, you know, like, completely different and off the, you know, out of?
Right.
Out of compliance, or, but these are very similar to what we've already approved.
Right.
And I said, let me take, excuse me. Let's just take a look at it, and I really don't see much of a difference. Thank you.
I think they're a little bit more up-to-date, you know?
That's?
I agree.
Current architecture.
So, should we, since we looked at it and we approved it, don't you feel we should just let staff just?
Yeah.
I have a, I have a tidbit for you all, which means advice from the world of Canada. When you guys modified the large flexible housing section, there wasn't really a specific sentence about the architecture, architecture-specific, the way you would have in an overlay zone. So, I would say that, to Commissioner Grillo's point, that's a pretty fair point to make based on your current regulations.
Right. It's just, the reason that this is so complicated is because it came in as senior housing, and now it's something completely different, but in the same configuration. So, it's kind of like trying to figure out which regulation we should be going after, because?
So, they didn't change any of the site?
So, I just figured, we bring it to you and let you know, and, you know, you could say yea or nay, or?
And again, it was just, I wanted the commission to see them and say, yep, these are nice.
I think they're, I think they're really nice.
So, that's all. That's the only reason it's here.
Question.
Excuse me.
Oh.
Commissioner Linsky is next.
Yeah, to the chair, to the staff. Do you know what's driving this change from the original?
I think the market?
Market? He thinks these are more, they think these are more attractive? Is that the idea?
The original developers, one of which is not in the room right now, they came in for the new multifamily housing development, because there was, there was, they didn't see a market for the senior housing. And so, that's why they modified basically the style and the client.
Yep.
But it's the exact same layout.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, just curious.
Is it okay that we receive these, what's today, the 12th? And it says received on the 30th?
That's just when we got it in office.
That's just a copy of something when we got it.
Oh, we got it on June 30th of 2025?
If the stamp isn't right, I would not, just ignore that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
So, we're relocating departments, offices right now, so things are a little bit?
Got you, okay.
Yeah, I've just disregarded it.
That's all right, then we got a wrong stamp on it.
Yeah.
Anybody else have comments, questions? I think they look great. So, and again, I just want to make sure everybody saw them and?
Can you just say a motion to accept this, the new architecture, or something of that nature?
Motion for staff to handle it?
Or give it up to staffs?
Motion for administrative approval of the new architecture on Stonebridge Commons.
So, that actually requires then them to come back with an administrative approval application?
No. Then we don't want administrative?
Okay, so back up.
Beep beep.
Motion to approve?
Accept the new?
Accept the new architecture.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right.
Who made the second?
I got it, I got it.
All right.
Okay, so, moving on.
Just, does it matter? Because John?
Oh, we could call him back in.
No, I didn't see Christian, because John had stepped out.
You still have enough.
It's okay, you still have 6-0 vote.
Yeah, you're still fine.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, Christian.
Sorry.
We can't do it right without our secretary.
It's all John's fault.
All right, so, I just wanted to let you know that?
It's Christian when you were calling, but we voted it in.
Anything else, other than that you're moving?
Yes, so we are moving on Saturday. We've actually, they've already taken half of our furniture over to 810.
I don't have a desk.
My desk and the whole section is over there, but it's not put together.
Using a cardboard lid.
I folded the plans on the floor today. So, but we are moving officially on Saturday, so we should, we're hoping to be mostly open on Monday, June 16th. And so, the public, if you need planning or building, it's going to be one-stop shopping over at 810 Enfield Street, which is just the building, one stop to the north of the town hall.
When's the open house?
Monday?
I don't know. I guess Monday.
I don't know how finished it will be, but.
And then, I just wanted to let you know that I will not be here at the June 26th meeting, as I'll be on vacation.
I will.
But she's going to cover the whole thing, and she pretty much did the whole thing tonight anyway.
Yeah.
You'll be in good hands with Georgie.
Hopefully.
All right. Well, good luck with your move, and I want to know how you got Rick to shrink wrap his desk?
He did it all today.
No, he's been working on it for about a week and a half, but there is no paper on his desk right now. I walked in this evening, I was like, oh, my God, he must have just said, ah heck with it, and thrown it away.
Holy cow.
It looks great, yep. No, he really, he?
He's packing away.
Oh, good. He's packed it all up.
Okay, applications to be received.
And we got PH 3127, 20 Oliver Road, application for a special use permit to develop a horse training facility, Seafood Delight Farms LLC, applicant owner, map 47, lot 42, I-1 Zone, and flood permit number 47 for the same 20 Oliver Road, application for a special flood hazard permit, Seafood Delight Farms, applicant owner, map 47, lot 42, I-1 Zone. And I'm going to let Georgie read the 1561 King Street, because it actually changed.
Yeah, we had to bump it up to a special use permit due to a waiver allowance per the overlay district. So, instead of SPR, it is now PH 3128, 1561 King Street, application for a special use permit for the development of an EV charging station and cafe, and waiver per 8.60.F. Global Development LLC applicant, Limow Family LLC owner, BG Zone, KSES DOD overlay zone.
All right.
I thought we talked about shortening that acronym.
We did, and now I know you hope why.
Yeah, we definitely need to. Anything else that we need to know?
Happy Thursday.
No opportunities or unresolved issues? No executive session?
Actually, let me just make one announcement. So, if anybody's listening, we, the building department and the planning department will be closed tomorrow. We have no furniture, and our computers are in pieces. So, we will be closed for the day, just so we can finalize the move. So, be aware.
All right.
Is building moving as well?
Yes.
Building and planning.
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.